We're gonna start with Ms. Raquel. Ms. Glasson?
Yes.
That Ms. Glasson?
I brought her with me.
Okay.
I can pass this around. I am Raquel Rosen. I am the Executive Director of Life4Health Group. I thank y'all again for letting me come again this year. Got your yearly numbers for y'all to look at. One of the biggest numbers I want to show y'all is that we were able to serve on 704 people from Union County this past year. So, you know, our doors are always open. We see children all the way to adult services. Another number that I really want y'all to look at is our chemical dependency services. A lot of people just think that we do outpatient, but we actually do have an inpatient facility there in Tupelo. So, we actually had 12 people from Union County that came to serve. Usually that's a 30-day stay. We had started something this past year where we have contracted with Alliance of Meridian that we can have clients that come to us. We can send them there. We can get any type of help that we need to get them clean, give them detox, and then they come for treatment. And that has worked really, really well. So, unfortunately, I know you probably have seen numbers and have seen things rise in your area with drug and alcohol abuse. So, those are numbers that we continue to see rise. And just to have that option with our counties is something that we want y'all to make sure we know about. Our crisis table safety unit. Ms. Net and I were just talking about that. We just received word on Friday that right now we have an eight-bed unit, but we just received word that Department of Finance has released money and we are going to gain eight more beds. We've been waiting on that for a year. And state legislature's really pushed at this past year, so we are going to 16 beds. We have the place for it. We have just been waiting on those funds to be released. So, we'll have a 16-bed unit in Lee County, and I know that's something that Ms. Net and I will continue to be working for to see how we can handle with commitments and, you know, with all those processes in Union County. Continue to serve your schools. Your superintendents, your principals are so supportive of us. We actually have therapists in every single one of your schools in Union County. And so, what that is, that serves as a liaison between parents, between the schools, and between mental health. Some of those kids take medication, so they come into our clinics and they can actually even use our pharmacy, whatever it takes to help serve those parents. Even have social workers going out to the homes to make sure those kids are taking their medications, making sure they have appropriate food, clothing, shelter, whatever it needs. So, I will tell you that one of our biggest things, and I've probably been hit a lot this year with it, and Melissa is quick to tell us, is that we need a presence in Union County. So, we serve seven different counties, and you'll see the counties listed at the top. Union County is our only county that we actually don't have a physical building, a physical office. Now, I know we're close enough to Pontotop and we're close enough to Tupelo to where your county, they can come to us there, but that is something that we're looking at. We already started looking at some locations. So, we would appreciate, you know, keep your eyes open for us. That we would love to have a building to where we can actually have a therapist full-time here in your county. So, it'd be something a little bit easier.
How big is it?
Not necessarily. All of our counties are different sizes. Enough to have two or three offices. Doesn't have to be very big. We have all the way from, you know, 1,500 square feet all the way up to 4,000 in one county. And that's really too big. But, you know, what we have is what we're able to serve out of those counties. So, y'all keep your eyes open for us, and I know we're talking about that.
Is this gonna be where people come there or therapy or use or?
Yes, anything. They need their medication, they can see a psychiatrist. A lot of our counties have a psycho-social rehabilitation program, which we do have in Union County that are picked up from Lee, enter Pontotop, just because we are close there. And that's basically what you consider like an adult day treatment. Some clients that may be not high functioning enough to go to work every day, but they're able to learn social skills and that kind of thing. So, we have vans that pick them up. So, it depends on the size of the building location, but that is something that we've been asked a lot of this past year. So, we're really, really looking to see what we can do to get an actual physical presence in your county.
And also, we do commitments here in our office for that person that's located in that office to be able to go to that place to be called.
Correct, correct. So, like right now, we go into your jails, we go into anything that you need, but we have to have people travel. And so, if we could still do that, but if we had a physical presence, those family members could go straight to that instead of having to go to Pontotop or Lee. We'd definitely make services more accessible, especially for our kiddos. We have lots of kiddos that see therapists in our schools, which is great for that, for building skills, but many of them need medication. A lot of them do see their primary care doctors here locally, but if they need something for, they need a medication passed for what would be required for like ADHD, if we had a true mood instability or psychosis, things like that. Most of our primary care doctors here are not comfortable prescribing those type of medications to children, and they prefer for them to see a psychiatrist. So, it would make that type service much more accessible to our children and youth population, and that's a big need in our schools right now.
Would they be able to have appointments, make appointments if they're there as well?
Yes, yes.
That's beautiful.
That's good. There's some thinking and looking and use some of our good prayers and stuff.
Okay, that was more for later. Okay.
Two separate tickets.
So, that's a big thing, and we hope, I'm hoping this time next year I come to see you and that we're saying that we have doors open somewhere. And, you know, that would just be, again, better communication and better for the clients here. And we are very thankful to have Melissa. She is y'all's representative for Union County. Melissa brings great insight to our team. Each county, of course, has one representative, and Melissa's a social worker here at the school and brings that insight or education to our board. So, we're very thankful to have her and appreciate everything y'all do for us.
Thank you. We hear something, we'll let y'all know.
All right.
Pass it along, and I will pass it to you.
All right. Thank y'all so much.
John? Thank y'all for having us. I presume everybody's got my petition. Is it well taken? All right. Basically, we're here to object to my client's taxation because he planted his lots. And planted lots being assessed higher than non-planted lots is encouraging our developers not to plant their subdivisions. There's, I'm not gonna name and call out clients' names because I don't know that, but there's several that do it. Let me tell you what can happen. You do not plant that subdivision, you lose opportunity to have restrictions on building requirements. You lose opportunity to have protective covenants. You lose the opportunity to have the reservation of your utilities, which is vital for those services. Okay. Now, when that happens, and I've seen it, you have one lot where a lawyer forgets to put that in there, it'll ruin the whole subdivision. Y'all see what I mean? Now, if you file it, those restrictions are in place, and our, and the attorneys and buyers and the ordinary courts have notice of it when they buy that lot. Now, they're tired of working on it. They cannot say, "I'm not bound by protective covenants." Okay, so if you get one lot, just one, and that person realizes he's not bound by restrictions or decides he doesn't want his neighbor to have utility, you've just ruined the whole development. Additionally, planted subdivisions create, when they're done right, they create better improvements because you're gonna have building restrictions that say, you know, limits to 2,000 square feet heated space. It's just better, and I know developers who, especially in the county, because you're gonna have a buyer buy a lot and say, "Let me go see if my restrictions are on there," and if they're not, he's gonna do what he wants to do. It's just bad.
I agree with everything John said about plating. I mean, it's important, and it does promote more efficiency and better developments. I agree with that. I mean, but now, John, are you, you're not asking for the board to require plating. You're just asking that in this particular, you don't think of plating.
Don't discourage planting by your actions.
By causing more taxes. Right, right.
I'm not saying the lots aren't residential, with this particular property being used as a hay patch. It's not being, unless 27, if y'all read 273150, it strictly requires assessments to go by actual use, not potential use. So, it's actually a hay patch. I've also put in my materials, not similar lots, but planted lots where the taxes are very much lower and used there around here in the old part of town. See what I mean?
It is in the letter, John, so that's a condition. But I'm gonna let Ms. Tammy respond to some of this with John's side.
Okay, I'm gonna speak to my client.
Okay. John, you got anything else?
Well, I'd just like to point out that the assessment has been made by price of lots.
Right.
I understand that that's the law, but that's, and maybe we're at the wrong place. We may be, need to be at the legislature to ask the statute be changed, but that's potential use. Even if that lot is bought at that price, unless there's a house on it, it's not a residential lot. And, you know, call up a real estate agent, have, ask, they shouldn't be telling that anyway, but, I mean, the assessments, our point, main point, and I say this where we're speaking, it should be according to the actual use of the lot. That's what that statute says.
Which is agricultural now.
Yes. Thank y'all.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Ms. Tammy, I'm gonna let you respond.
All right.
So, the board understands the tax issue because they heard of John.
All right. We looked up some other things when this was brought to our attention, and then we received the letter also from John. And some of the properties that are addressed are in subdivisions and in the city limits. And they have what is called front foot footage, front footage that bases their taxes. Then also, you have some other properties that had, how the roads are attached to that, as well as water, such as a pond. So, that brings the value of that property down because you can't build on those properties. We treated Mr. Bailey the same way we had the others for the past 30 years. When you take property and divide it out into a subdivision or you sell lots from that, it changes the use value. So, when some of those lots were sold, the subdivision was planted, there were, it was on the market. So, it changed it from agricultural use to market. So, that's how the market value got set into that. Even though it has not sold yet, I understand that it still could be used as a hay field, but because it was changed with the deed, with the plat, and it was on the market to sale, that's how it got changed to the use value. We did provide an advantage to those taxes before this law was ever passed. Union County had always given what they call a developer's discount. Doesn't take it down to half price, of course, but it is an advantage for the taxes that he did receive that developer's discount without requesting that discount. We just automatically have always done that in Union County.
What's the discount now?
I think it was either like 42 or 46. I don't know exactly what Karen and Christie had told me that. But, you know, we had applied that previously to his assessment.
So, you raise the taxes based upon the market value, and then you apply the percentage to it. In these other subdivisions, once you looked at one that John had looked at, are the, do the taxes change regardless of whether the house was built or not? Like, in other words, when the, when the property's planted, is that when the taxes change or does the house have to be put on the property?
We have a difference in city limits, county, within previous neighborhoods that were developed within the city. Those are lots versus acreage. So, that plays a difference if that's what you're asking.
Well, man, I think John's point is that, you know, we planted, but there's no houses built. And so, until a, John, you correct me if I'm wrong.
No, no.
But until a house is built, then it should not be taxed, you know, as, as it is now. That's his position. So, I'm just curious, are there other places in the county where the taxes did not rise until the house was built?
I don't know that I know that answer. I'm trying to think of like the newer ones that we have in our area.
What about?
And I just.
I know mine, I bought 60 acres. And they did three, 11. And his three acres cost more than my 60 acres.
If it's less than five acres, then you get the market value, not the agriculture.
So, what's this?
The taxes went from like $300 to $2800.
$300 a lot?
Well, you know, we didn't have lives, but essentially the same amount of acreage would have been $300.
How much did you get? Value did.
Well, the first letter I ever sent to the state, to the Department of Revenue, this was about what his use value was for '21. And then in '22, when it changed, the market value changed it up to $2,500.
That's per lot? Sure.
It was certain acres. Let's see what the.
Well, that's for the.
That's, yeah, that's, yeah.
But, you know, can you do it, and it's not all its fault.
Well, that's what we gotta find out. That's, I mean, that's what we gotta find out.
I think it's actually, it's great.
Yes.
So, well, so the lawyers can look back at 273150 and where it says the supervisors or governing authorities of a municipality may provide partial ad-horn tax exemptions on the land used for non-residential purposes, blah, blah, blah. But then when it gets to the part where it's use value or market value, you have to decipher in that law. I mean, he's selling it as market value, but yet there's no house on it yet. So, is it still going to be classified as agricultural use value?
That's where I was.
That interpreting that law is where we're differentiating our ideas, I believe.
At the end of the day, we don't wanna discourage nobody from, from doing something. That's what we're here for. That brings more tax dollars in, and it's definitely going to when the house gets on. I don't know. I think we need to look into this with, before we just, I mean, y'all, we're going here, but it's just my opinion.
But I feel like I'm tied as an assessor because the use of that property had changed. And based on what we had always done, when it changed to that for sale, it was market value at that time. It was no longer a hay field. It was no agricultural use. It had changed. So, that's how we based our assessment on that.
And that form of law is there.
That's how we interpret it, and until a lawyer can tell me that we've interpreted incorrectly, I have to do it the way they've done it the past 30 years.
We need to look at it a little bit more. Do y'all want to take this on the bottom, the way y'all want it? I made a motion taking on the bottom. I think we need to look into this with, because we not only, we don't wanna affect nobody else from not coming to Union County to do this. So, I mean, I don't know. We just need, Mr. Bailey, let us look into this with.
Can I say that?
Yes. Mr. Bailey, I think really she's worried about the law. I understand her.
I understand that too. I saw nothing in the law that said it has to be appraised and locked back. I've never heard of a property being appraised by calling it a real estate agent and praising that property at whatever price you're asking for. It's not, you do not get what you're asking for property. We sold four lots and certainly did get what, what they were, what they were appraising. And, you know, I, I never have understood why, since they, you know, you know, I bought a house out there myself and sold it before I moved into. I bought a house I now live in Central Park South, South Creek, which is planted. But Tammy tells me that these lots are not, these plants are not filed. That makes a difference. And they're sending the lot with the house. Yet although my lot, my house, and my house I bought out here in Tewksbury, that I had to have an appraisal to get loaned, and lot is praised in that place. So, that is not, it's not all happening. It's house and lot. So, that lot, in my opinion, as it sits out there, like, should be the value. Because that's the way, whenever I'm asking, that's what he's asking for here. That should be the value of the lot, but it's not. It's not that here. And I saw nothing in that, in that law that said, in fact, I called Tammy before, before I did the subgrat, before, before I planted it and filed and asked her if it would change. She said, "No, there will not be any change in taxes until it's approved."
We, we didn't understand. We had miscommunication there. I did not realize it was a planted subdivision.
Are these planted?
I think so.
It's all, it's all part of Central is. I mean, Central, whatever. Huntington, Huntington is not. The first thing is planted. This thing, he's not gonna plant any other future places. From the perspective of a real estate attorney and what's happening in this county, which we're in a residential boney, this is a huge issue. In 20 years, the difference that will be made if these subdivisions are planted rather than not is astronomical. And it'll help your tax revenue. Because you got that lot locked in, and you said, "You gotta build 25,000, uh, 2,500 square foot house." And you've got to do that. If that plant's filed over, correct is our file, it's gonna help. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you, y'all.
Thank you.
If they're not planted, you can't put no restrictions on them? Is that what you're saying? And you can't.
Well, you can put restrictions, you know, but that's the thing that you change hands, that restrictions don't get a tax versus another.
That's right. If you don't plant. Well, if you got the plant, if they have, the real estate attorney has to go through the plant. They understand what restrictions are, but obviously anybody can put restriction there on the date.
You can without.
But that's fine, without plating, but it could be missed. I mean, you know, a lot of times when a attorney's copying the old things and your trade first up. You know, pair label misses something here.
This is not.
It's a wall.
It's good.
I mean, it's a wall.
But what I'm saying, just like, just like planting, where I've got 60 acres and I get three acres. Well, those three acres are hired. You change this, it's gonna, it's gonna change the whole county, all everybody. Just got to listen.
I still think that Chandler's got to look at that law and determine if.
Market versus use.
Market versus use and when it changes to that, not with the.
That's something we need to look at.
But when it changes. Because we've always understood the law that it was, when it went from agricultural to it was on sale, it was market value.
And if you change, it could be a fee thing, if they change everybody's. So, you gotta look at it pretty hard. If you change one, you might change.
I respect him doing the platform and anything because you're not just gonna have just anything. You can have something nice there.
You restrict, restrict it, can't do without plating, but it's not as strong.
Right. So, I mean, him trying to make things look better and nicer, he's getting beat up for it. Not beat up for it, but.
And you go back to Bramall Estates, Owen Road.
He sold a lot from Owen Law, and he's not up here. I know, he's paying.
North Oaks is another example. Once it was divided out like that. Sherman Estates, that's the way it's been. One of them is upset because theirs went up so high, but it's how it broke it out. Once they started putting houses, but they didn't put them in a certain section, that acreage got a lot higher market value than these others did. So, it's, it's not just Mr. Bailey. It's affected a lot of different people that base the one that's brought, brought forth to your attention.
Y'all ready to move on? You made the, you made the motion. Randy second. Same sound. All in favor? Motion here. All right. We're gonna start with the consent agenda. Prove statement of expenditures for tax office from August 2023. Prove statement of expenditures to Sheriff's Park and Jail from August 2023. Prove the legal law. Prove the plane dockets from August 2023. Prove, prove the order minutes for August 2023. Prove the road works. Approve a road department work schedule for September 2023. Approve nanny day to liquid list for August 2023.
That's something that comes to the pack with far. And I can start sending this to you now. It's about six pages long, but it's not that. Where it has, as I say, is the liquid list for also in great contact. My law had this in addition to my. We have, we have two separate ones, but for yours, we have this on there too. So if you want to stay with this. Anyway, so. Y'all can start sending something. Okay, bye. Are you looking?
Have you written?
Hand over.
Hand over the something.
I like, I like that one. Hard there. Only garbage. I swear. Well, I swear I just do.
Okay.
Way I'm there.
Uh, prove solid waste register for August two thousand twenty-three. Prove this medical examiner for these, especially whole team of them.
She says it early, so she says he's probably two months ahead.
So I have emails on sale, but I don't want to please.
Motion by CJ. Second by Sam, all in favor? Motion here. Alright, we're gonna move on to county administrator. Approval of amending two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three annual budget to actually, to actual expenditures.
We do every, this time every year, the fourth time every year, we adjust, so you have to make it through. It's like, you just have to make, have to prove it to the act, the actual budget, the annual budget to the actual expenditures that you spent out.
We do that year and every year. Overall budget looked pretty good. It's just some land I thought we were a little bit, some onion. So we just adjusted. Okay. Looked pretty good. Need a motion.
I'm making a motion.
Motion by Steve. Second. Second by Randy, all in favor? Motion here. Approval of Latin Tubby drainage history resolution for millage.
Actually, we're looking at a government.
Approval of town creek natural water management history resolution for millage.
And I'm just gonna get and say that my Tubby, it's, it'll just say it at ten miles.
Had changes.
It changed.
Thankfully, we're not much profit.
The town creek is eight point two five.
I had got them first, but I don't. We have to put in our tax.
Eight miles for, um, back down. And they want to, they want to buy. Yeah.
How much? Happy W S, I don't wear it anymore.
I see a bomb talk, unions on the two of them.
Yeah. I'll say. Motion by CJ. Second by Randy. All in favor? Motion here.
Okay, discuss, discuss, discuss quotes for repairing at model school library building.
And we need to rescind those quotes. We did that in April.
Yes, back on April seventeenth, we have, we would.
Model.
We have a. Quotes from, um, local construction.
Yeah.
Has that been here?
No, from them and from local construction and Steelcon and they haven't been able to complete it. So now we can receive two new quotes from.
No, this is the new.
These are the new ones. Okay, the old ones were Steelcon and. Cray.
Oh, yeah.
No, I have a right. Yeah, these are my new ones. These are my old ones. I'm sorry, these are my old ones. Uh, okay. Here we go, start all over. Cross construction and match the craft builder, builders. Those are the ones we need rescind. That is the first one that we need, um, addressed. And the second one is from, from Myrtle, I'm sorry. Um, local construction and from Steelcon. Notice construction has a quote of fifty-one hundred dollars and Steelcon is at sixty-four, yeah, six thousand four hundred fifty dollars. Local C is fifty-one hundred, five thousand one hundred dollars. Steelcon, six thousand four hundred fifty dollars. And we need rescind.
Make a motion, take the low B.
Okay, do you want to make a motion rescind it first? Got to rescind it first.
Rescind it, the old B.
Rescind the old B and its old parts. And then take the lowest quote on the next one.
Motion by Randy, rescind the old B, second by CJ. All in favor? Motion here. So y'all need these motions, second, stand good for the.
They are, big man here.
Alright, so are we ready to move on? Let's move on to you now. How about that? Uh, prove Department for Revenue, approval of ad-lore tax exemptions.
Okay, we had, I think it's fourteen, fifteen, something like that, ad-lore tax exemption applications made from industries in Union County. Y'all have approved the application on August twenty-first, just approving the applications that were sent, been sent to the Department of Revenue. Department of Revenue either approved them or made changes of what they've done. They have approved all of them with some changes based on what the tax assessor's position statement was. And now we're having to give a final approval on what the Department of Revenue is saying.
Same, we're all paid. Approved what that for?
Approved, yes.
Approved. Motion, Bill, first.
Motion by Randy. Second. Second by Steve, all in favor? Motion here. Now, the circuit clerk, approval election commissioner, plain ball, the five of them. Motion by Sam. Second, second by Randy, all in favor? Motion here. Approval of circuit clerk payment as services as rent to stock. Motion by CJ. Second, Steve, all in favor? Motion here. Alright, road department, discuss quotes for repairing County Road seventy-five and County Road ninety-one.
One quote received is Phillips contracting for County Road seventy-five and ninety for seventy-four thousand nine hundred fifty dollars. Seventy-four nine five zero. Falcon Contracting Company submitted there for eighty-three thousand five hundred fifty dollars. Eight three five five zero. So Falcon's eighty-three five five zero, Phillips is seventy-four nine five zero.
Need a motion, take Phillips. Motion, motion by Sam. Second, second by Steve, all in favor? Motion here. Approval of enforcement payroll compensation for Randy Hall affecting Randy five two thousand twenty-three. Motion, Sam.
Sam.
Second, Randy Hall in favor? Approval of Timothy Dow Up Church as assistant road manager affecting September fifth. Motion to CJ. Second, second by Sam, all in favor? Motion here. Uh, discuss quotes on pickup and approval of manual check for truck.
Okay, so we have two quotes that we received. One from Davis Ford Sales in Newton. Fifty-two thousand seven ninety-nine. Fifty-two thousand seven ninety-nine. Second one from Metro Ford Lincoln, which is Barnes Cross.
Can't avoid.
Right? This is it?
Morris Cross from Metro, they're two different places, Metro's on people.
It just says Metro Ford, Barnes Cross.
Oh, that's right.
I'm sorry.
I thought you were talking about Morris Cross.
Okay, no, no, I'm sorry. And you got Metro Ford Lincoln, one pass Barnes Cross. Okay, for forty-nine thousand nine sixty-seven. Metro Ford took, forty-nine nine sixty-seven. And then Davis Ford in Newton, fifty-two seven ninety-nine.
Motion. CJ. Metro Ford. They love Steve. Sorry. Quote. I'm sorry. Yes. Make a second, second, same, all in favor? Motion here. Was that proven manual check too?
No.
Yes. I'm sorry. It's on the counter.
Approval of donation, uh, donation of Dodge pickup to Cree Rivers. Approval inventory deletion of truck. Move that one in again.
Chad, isn't it for the bicycle playoff?
Yes. Yes.
Motion for free.
Motion by Randy. Second. Second by Steve, all in favor? Motion here. Approval of manual check for eighty-two dollars payable to Christie's seventy-eight for fuel. Unable to use fuel meter. Motion by Sam. Second, second by Randy, all in favor? Motion here. Alright, cut my notes. Yeah, I just bowled.
And I bowled for, I'll do it for.
Alright, we're gonna move on to tax office. Name. I'm signing two of them. Mountain backup, look. Approval of notice of increase and petition to decrease.
I just have the decreases. There were no increases to include this time. Uh, these are two personal property accounts that were closed in twenty-fourteen and twenty-sixteen. They were turned in on the insolvency list way back then. But now that we have American Financial Credit Services, they, um, have contacted these people and they finally paid attention to us and. Got in touch with us. They know, they do not own that property, so we will take that off of the twenty-sixteen and the twenty-seventeen land roll assessment.
Motion to CJ. Second by Randy, all in favor? Motion here. Paying for objections to land roll.
I did that one earlier.
Give that. Approval of two thousand and three land roll.
So that hearing was for today, but we had others that contacted us in the office. Based on the assessment letter they received earlier. So we did have some that we had to take off. For example, there were homes that were destroyed. And so those ones with road and solid, those were no longer there, took us off the land roll. Um. What was the number? We had to condition, um, two industries down. It was not conditioned down as what the state has in their manual. So just some of those things that we had to go back and check on after we had turned in the land roll. So this is your new land roll with those. I don't have an exact amount to tell you how much it went down, but it was not, not to your. So here's, here's the updated rate capitulation. That usually the, the more accurate numbers. So you'll just replace. Okay, okay.
Need a motion to approve? Motion. Motion by Randy. Second, second by CJ.
I'm just.
All in favor?
And Terry, I have your, yours on the office.
Need approval of inventory deletion. You got eight of them?
I do. These were, um, computers that when we had to change from the Windows eight and updates on this.
It's a piece of equipment right there.
That took care of, um. We had to delete those because they were obsolete to what the state system requires.
We got those down to it soon.
I just, I just, it updated it. I had the old ones and it may be in the.
Y'all probably need a motion on this inventory deletion.
Chad up here doing stuff.
Oh, boy, we, you're getting one, boy.
I even think it was like an adding machine that the.
You're gonna hurt.
So get rid of the. Hackle later. Adding machine.
I need a motion to approve. Motion. Motion by Randy, thank you, Randy, that's the reason I always take.
Say y'all approved to have the ball like that. Get rid of the ones that won't work.
Second by Sam. Did what?
I feel a little good about that. About the way I pick up the U. All in favor? I can't warm feelings about that. I've been sleeping all morning, this morning already.
Alright, the voluntary fire department would need to approve a manual check for ten volunteers by our department's stupid. Three, mother, three, rebate.
Motion for through.
Motion by Randy. Second by Steve, all in favor? Motion carries.